As we are having a hybrid meeting, I will read the following. Please note that this meeting is being conducted as a hybrid meeting in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order. Participants may attend remotely or in person. This meeting is being conducted in real time, is open to the public, and any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. Copy of the agenda and any related material have been posted to the Town of Monroe website for public inspection. Notice hereby given that only 250 members may access this hybrid meeting remotely at any one time. Reboot access is granted solely by the technology provider and is not controlled by the Town of Monroe. In the unlikely event that appears we are approaching said limit, the Chairman retains the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public. This meeting is being recorded, and while we ask those attending remotely to mute your microphones unless recognized to speak. Anytime you say or do, anything you say or do is, anything you say, do, or is displayed on your screen may become part of the recording, which will be posted to the town's website within seven days. Use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting at any time. Public participation. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on anything going on in town that would like to bring to the attention of this commission? Please remember that we are not to discuss anything that is before the commission or that is likely to come before the commission. That being said, are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission and general public participation? Any members of the public that would like to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll move on to public hearings. First public hearing is RAA 2021-02, file number 1016E, mixed-use design district and special development district. This is continued from the last time we spoke about it, May 6, 2021. I believe we have Mr. Solley.
I have exhibits, Mr. Chairman, too.
All right.
I have new exhibits, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, make up with the new exhibits.
Exhibit number nine, public comment letter. Exhibit number 10, request postpone review and continue hearing to the next meeting. Exhibit 11, grant of extension time to commission by the applicant. That is all.
Okay, then we'll go to the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solley. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solley Engineering. With me here this evening is Greg Kiumidolsky from representing the property owner and Howard Rappaport from Continental Properties, part of the applicant team, and also Joe Williams, attorney, who has quite a bit of experience in this, and we wanted to have him come and participate and share some of his thoughts as well. He'll be participating a little bit later in the presentation. I was wondering if I could possibly made presenter so I could share my screen and just run the commission through what I believe hopefully to be the last presentation on this particular topic. Awesome. Thank you, Donna. So again, so we're here tonight to talk about a proposed regulation amendment to create the Route 25 Main Street Design District within the Town of Monroe. As discussed at previous hearings, our intent for this was to kind of, since we are proposing a meaningful regulation amendment, we broke out our presentation into smaller, small meaningful chunks. And I think this, what tonight's hearing represents is what I believe is really the culmination of all those other meetings. We talked about design districts versus conventional zoning. We talked specifically, a lot of conversation about the location on where this design district would land. Again, this is to create a design district along the Route 25 corridor, and it would be eligible, and properties of a certain size and a certain, I mean, certain characteristic would be eligible, eligible to pursue special development district zone change as part of this regulation. We had a very good discussion at the first meeting in May about the density that we would be looking to propose, and then the affordability component. And then tonight, we hope represents the last presentation for this application for the commission's consideration. So I'm gonna provide a kind of a brief overview summary, and then we did provide some minor revisions to our language based on the discussions held at our last meeting. I'm gonna summarize those for you, and then I'm gonna pass it over to Joe, to just, to him, for him to offer some additional insight and thoughts for the commission to consider, and then close this out and hopefully move forward with a positive response from you guys. So just again, just to orient everyone, and we'll try to do this as brief as possible because I know we've been talking about it for a long time. What we're proposing is to create the Route 25 Design District. And this would essentially create a design district which would run from the town line of Trumbull extending north and stopping just south of an area that's been identified as a future potential South Main Village Design District, and then continue north from that area going towards the town line of Newtown. What we've proposed is to create this design district which allows the commission to consider individual properties for additional consideration from a land use standpoint, and this is modeled off of the South Main Village Design District that the Town of Newtown has used for years very successfully. And its current structure is that only properties that exceed two acres of size would be eligible for a special design district designation, which essentially, if someone wanted to pursue this and they met those criteria, they would come in with an application to create a special development district specific to that property, which the commission could weigh all the pluses and minuses of that land use planning tool on a case-by-case basis, and make sure that a project complies with the intent of the regulation, the POCD, and really meets what the commission's expectations would be to be eligible for this designation. For properties over 15 acres in size, and only over 15 acres in size, would be able to pursue multi-family development, so essentially the development of apartments. And that would really only, as we discussed at length, there's really only two real properties where that could potentially be eligible, and only one that I'm truly aware of that could actually have the septic capacity to accommodate a large development, and that is the property of 127 Main Street, the Pondview site. And again, the impetus for this application is to potentially pursue a development at that site, and we'll go into that in a little bit more detail a little bit later. So we've gone through our proposed language pretty extensively over this past few months. Again, it's to create this design district, and I'm just gonna touch on some of the changes that we made since the last meeting. Previously, we had modified this so that it, again, applies for parcels two acres or larger, and only parcels over 15 acres would be allowed to pursue multi-family within the MDD. Some of the changes that we made after the last hearing have to do with the process for projects over 15 acres in size. What we've done is we had a requirement that parcels of this size have to provide a fiscal impact assessment to study the overall municipal budget and services, which include analyzing the demand for apartments in the municipality, analyzing the likely number of school-aged children, identifying a likely impact on municipal services, including but not limited to police, fire, EMS, and public works, and provide a net fiscal impact assessment, including tax generation, cost to municipality, and then net tax revenue, to really give the commission a solid understanding of how an individual project could possibly impact the community. So, so since our last submission, this is new information that we added to really beef up what those requirements would be at the time of an SDD application, so the commission really has all the information available to it to weigh each application on a case-by-case basis. We also added B, which is the requirement for traffic impact study, to go along with the project, so that when an applicant comes before you with a, the creation of a special development district, if it's over 15 acres in size, it actually has to include all of these additional elements, so that the commission can truly understand the overall complexity of a project, include a traffic analysis, include a full fiscal impact analysis, and also provide sufficient detailed documentation of the septic capacity of the property to show that that project would be able to be accommodated on the subject property. And so these are a lot of the things that we beefed up from the last iteration of the regulations, and this is what's currently in front of the commission for consideration. And just so the commissions are aware, you know, going through this effort to provide this, these schematic design plans and all these additional analysis really does represent a considerable investment on behalf of the applicant to show and to prove out that the project would meet the, you know, would, would, would fit the guidelines, fit the regulations, and really, you know, be something that the commission should hopefully view favorable. The other changes that we made after the last hearing has to do with projects specifically for multi-family or projects within the SDD that would propose multi-family. And there were two main elements that we wanted to add to this. We wanted to add a affordability component, because we know that's something that the commission is concerned with, and we recognize that. So what we did is we provided a provision that affordable units shall be provided in accordance with Section 8.2.3 P7, which is the affordability requirements that the commission adopted and established as part of the mixed-use regulation, which was recently adopted by the commission. We know that you went through a lot of painstaking work in making sure that the language you previously adopted met the, you know, met the true objectives and goals of the town, and rather than trying to recreate the wheel, we just basically said that any, any multi-family project that would come under this SDD application would have to provide those same affordability requirements. So we maintain that language, we just refer to it as part of this application. Additionally, we did provide a unit mix specification into this regs, because our previous iteration said that multi-family projects could only be one bedrooms or two bedrooms, no three bedrooms, but we didn't provide a specific mix in how many of those units could be one bedroom versus two bedrooms. The mixed-use regulations, they do have a provision that restricts the number of two bedrooms, but what we wanted to do is provide something that we knew would work for a potential project that we're, we're working on. So what we're proposing is that no more than 65% of the total units within a development would be, would be able to be two-bedroom units. Now, I know that's a higher number than what was permitted in the mixed-use, but I wanted to point out a couple of important components to this and why we believe that number is appropriate. When, when adopting an affordability component, that has some pretty considerable impacts to the, you know, financial performance of a project. And by providing those affordable units, which we believe is something that is good for the community and helps achieve a lot of other goals, the unit mix is critical to ensure that a project can still be financially viable. And as we've discussed, an interested party who has an option to pursue this project at 127 Main Street, they have a, they are, in my opinion, probably one of the elite or premier multi-family development companies in the region, and they have, they have a proven track record of developing really, really high-end luxury-type apartments, and their projects require a specific unit mix in order for those projects to be viable. And I wanted to be open and clear with the commission that if, if the unit mix is significantly modified from what we're proposing, there are, the potential for a project by Continental probably wouldn't work in the Town of Monroe, and unfortunately, they'd have to move on to other sites. But I think that ultimately, the luxury-type product is something that would really be a benefit to the community, and we want it to be 100% clear and transparent that this mix is incredibly important and critical in order for a project to move forward. So I wanted to make sure we pointed that out, and I also wanted to add that by adopting this regulation, you're simply allowing a future application to come forward, and when those SDD applications come forward, each one gets reviewed on the basis and the merits of that application. So I wanted to run through for the commission one more time the process in which a project would go forward if this regulation is adopted. This proposed regulation is simply to create the design district along Route 25 in the Town of Monroe. If this is adopted, it would be a several-step process in order for an actual project to come to fruition underneath this, underneath this regulation. So the first step would be an application for a special development district is filed as a regulation amendment petition application with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that is a proposed, so as part of that application, we submit schematic plans, and then if projects are over 15 acres, that also has to include septic capacity documentation, a traffic impact study, and that fiscal impact assessment. So that application is simply proposing, we've identified a piece of property, we think that this is appropriate for a special development district, this is what that property would look like, these are the specific regulations that we would propose that would govern how that project would be developed, and each application is entirely, stands on its own, and the commission has full and complete discretion on whether or not that application is something that meets the objectives and goals of the town and the community, and they have full discretion to say, yes, we agree, we think this is a good project, we would, we would accept and approve the proposed SDD, or they can say, we don't believe this is a good fit for the community, and you can deny it, and then that's it. There's no real challenge rights, there's no setting precedence. This land use process or this, this legislative process from the commission is something that's been proven to be successful in other communities, and we think this would be a really great addition for the Town of Monroe to adopt, and it also leads the way for you to consider similar-type zoning policies for other parts of, parts of town. Again, this application is only for Route 25, but this would be that first step. So after an SDD is, is applied for and the commission receives this information, reviews it, if they deem that is, that is a good application, there would have to be a second step. That second step would be an act, an application for a zone boundary change petition to actually establish it on the property for the special development district, and then that application process follows all of the application procedures as a special exception permit. So that's the more detailed plans, the elevations, the perspectives, all those required materials for a special exception permit, and then that process also goes through the same referrals to Architectural Review Board and the Inlet Wetlands Commission. So, so it's a, it's a multi-step process, the commission has complete discretion along the way, and we wanted to make sure that was laid out for you one more time to make sure that was full, clearly understood that this application before you was simply the first step to enable this process to take place, and then even after this, each application gets, you know, full review by the commission and complete discretion on whether or not that is something that would be a good valuable addition to the community. So with that, I wanted to, you know, again, as we go through this, perhaps answer any questions that the commission have, but I wanted to ask Joe Williams to offer some, some additional thoughts that he has. He's been through a number of similar-type applications and developments in other communities throughout the state of Connecticut, and I think he has some, a lot of good insight to offer the commission, and then we're gonna just run through some pictures again of some of the other projects that, that are indicative of a project that we would like to bring before the commission if they view this application favorable. So Joe, I'll pass it on to you.
Thanks, Kevin. We can probably just stop sharing the screen for the moment if you don't mind. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commission members. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. It's nice to be with you all again. Again, I'm Joe Williams, a partner in the law firm of Shipman &amp; Gilling, where I chair our real estate practice group, and for a little over 26 years have been practicing land use and real estate law throughout the state of Connecticut. And as Kevin correctly mentioned, I've handled quite a few multi-family housing applications throughout Fairfield County and across the state of Connecticut in that time. What I thought I would do is not provide any kind of legal argument, but just some factual observations that I have had the benefit to gain over the years that I've had the privilege of working on these types of applications. And the first observation I would share, again, consistent with some of the points you heard already, is that this type of application does not allow anything to be built yet. If you approve it, there is no particular project that can be directed at the moment. Rather, there are at least two more major steps that have to be done. The SDD zoning has to be put in place, and then the detailed plans and studies have to be given to you to review and decide if you're gonna approve it. So really effectively, what a commission in your shoes is doing in acting on this type of application is you're really just answering the phone from a developer and saying, come on in and show us your proposal, and you're allowing that proposal to be made, and you're allowing yourselves to receive and, and review and act upon that proposal, and that's it. So that's the first point. Second point, I think a lot of towns have learned over time in working on these types of regulations is, don't allow great to become the enemy of good. And what do I mean by that? I have, I have seen it multiple times that sometimes towns try to make a perfect set of rules upfront with a great amount of detail, addressing every possible concern and scenario, and then they find that they have lost the private sector and they don't see any applications. And my own experience on that just recently was, was that happened in the Town of Cheshire, where the Cheshire Planning and Zoning Commission, about 10 years ago, adopted a multi-family and affordable housing regulation, and it was very detailed in particular, and 10 years went by and they saw zero proposal. And after that amount of time, I had a client who was considering bringing in a 30G application, but instead we decided to go to the town and try to work with them on the rules, and the commission was willing because it realized its regulation had prevented any applications. The commission was willing to work with us, tweak some of the rules, dial back some of the great amount of detail on it, and ultimately, last summer, approved a very nice 114 apartment development that I think they were very pleased with and are looking forward to seeing it built. So I think because of that, many towns have found that they do better with letting the professionals put the proposal together, figure out what's the unit mix that they need for the development with an affordable component to be successful long-term in that town with the cost structure that they are facing for land and materials and soft costs like me and Kevin and everything else. Then they come in and they provide you all the information, hopefully address your concerns, and you have the give and take and back and forth, and you work with them for the design and whatever issues you want to see worked out. But that's the beauty of an SDD, this one, is that it gives you, well, first of all, you decide if it gets put in place on a property, and then it gives you the flexibility to work with the developer, deal with a lot of that stuff once the proposal comes into you. And then my third and final point is, as I've seen in many places, this kind of development ultimately becomes a great long-term asset to the town that it is really glad to have in place. It gives the town a shot in the arm, really, it encourages additional economic development, it attracts additional restaurants, retail, and it says to the business world, this town is a desirable place, it's on the move, and it's modern. And in doing so, you know, putting this kind of regulation in place that can allow this kind of development ultimately adds jobs, adds customers for local businesses in town, and it adds an additional place for employees of those businesses to live, and for kids who grew up in town to be able to stay, and for empty nesters to be able to stay in town. It also delivers usually a hugely positive net fiscal impact to the town's grand list, and often, the owner of this kind of apartment development becomes a major taxpayer, who's one of the largest in the town. And I can tell you, in my own hometown of Glassonberry, I'm coming to you right now, Howard Rappaport recently finished construction on a large, very attractive apartment development that, that has had exactly that experience in our town and that we're very happy to have here. So, and in doing that, not only will all of those things be attained, but finally, you can also provide more housing options to people like our first responders, our teachers, and our grocery store workers, people that have been heroes to us in getting us through this pandemic, and who deserve a nice new place to live in a great town like Monroe. So those are my observations from having worked on a lot of these kinds of applications over the years all around the state, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions from any commission members once we finish up the presentation, but for now, I'll turn it back over to Kevin, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Joe. And we just have a, just to kind of, to rehash again, I think what we've proposed is a really good opportunity for the town to consider to add another land use planning tool into your toolbox, and it's a way for the commission to consider applications and projects such as this on a case-by-case basis, have ultimate control over what can happen and how it can happen, and it's proven to be very beneficial in a lot of other communities, and I think the commission has, has seen that and heard that through a number of different elements. And I know that the, the commission has even heard from members of the public who wish this would even apply to more properties along Route 25 and potentially, you know, reduce that acreage requirement for, for just to be eligible, and then even reduce acreage requirement for multi-family. Again, our application has been designed as a way to take a baby step into adopting this tool. The language before you is what our, our proposal is. The commission obviously has the ability to amend that as they see fit, but this is the language that we're, we're proposing as part of this. And, and the main impetus for this, as we've said and discussed previously through Regulations Subcommittee Meetings, even formally with this submission, is the goal is to create an opportunity where we can bring in a development at 127 Main Street, which is the Pondview site, which is currently under excavation, and the goal would be to bring in an application that would comply with these regulations, it would meet the, all of the considerations under the multi-family component, those additional restrictions we put in place, it would include an affordability component, but it is critical that it does have the unit mix that's, that we've specified, and I think the commission can also take solace in the fact that any application that comes before you in the future as part of an SDD application, you have, you have the complete discretion to weigh the materials before you, and, and you have the, the ability to make sure that any individual application will not have an adverse impact on, on the Town of Monroe, the services that the community provides, and there can be a net positive gain to the community through taxes and everything else. And just to kind of show the commission again, some examples of some other projects in comparable communities that have, that Continental has been able to perform and execute. Project Trumbull, 200 units, 60% two bedrooms, no affordability requirement, but a beautiful facility with pretty incredible amenities that would be something I think any community could be proud of. In Glassonberry, One Glassonberry, again, a very, very nice community, as Joe mentioned, he's a, he's a proud Glassonberry resident. 66% two bedrooms, no affordability component, but really, really nice amenities. Some other projects in Rocky Hill, another, you know, 60-plus percent two-bedroom mix, really nice amenities, and then Shelton, The Mark, which is another project, which again has really, really nice features, a great addition to that community, and it has, you know, some really nice interior/exterior qualities to it, and it kind of creates something that really does add that additional housing option, which has been identified in the POCD. There's, we believe there's a need for it, and we're really excited that, that we're towards the end of this process, because we believe that this, by adopting this proposed regulation amendment before you, really sets the stage for the commission to consider a project such as this at this particular site that can have and provide all of those amenities, create a really, really nice project for the town that could provide a net benefit, but it ultimately gives you complete control and discretion, so that if somebody else wanted to try to bring in a project such as this, but it didn't provide and, and meet those same expectations, it didn't have those same features, those same amenities, those same, that that's those same features, those same amenities, those same, that that same luxury type feel, the commission has no obligation to approve it. They they can consider it, but they can say this doesn't meet the intent and they can deny it. And you have complete discretion over that. So so we believe that this truly is a really good planning tool that has been proven time and time again in many, many comparable communities to the town of Monroe. And we think that this will be a great addition. And, you know, we've appreciated the opportunity to discuss this with you, go through these details. I think what what the product that's before you today is is greatly improved over what we presented to you at the very initial application. And we always know that as things go through a public process, making those tweaks, making those amendments is what ends up with a better regulation. We think that what what's before you here tonight is 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 a very good amendment and we thank you. You know, we we appreciate again the consideration and we happen to answer any other questions, but we hope the commission will view this favorably to allow us to move forward to the second step and bring some more detailed information and hopefully have some really positive results with our proposed language. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that the commission may have. And we can go from there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sully. So I would just want to remind the commission that this is a text amendment. This is not an S P. We can't put restrictions on it when we do close and go to deliberation. This is the time, right now, to make changes to this text amendment that you want in order to be able to move forward with it. So with that, I'll start on my right.
No questions.
All right, Kevin, I just have a couple of questions. So basically, this design district, I mean, I see that's just one component is the multifamily, but it it covers a lot of other stuff. Right? And so when this comes in front of the commission, whether it is this commission or commission down the road, is this all one application or is it a zone change first, then it goes to an application? Or is it all one thing that's brought in front of the commission?
Sure. So so in order for someone to come in with a special development district application, they propose a regulation amendment to create that special development district specific to a piece of property. And with that, they have to include all the details associated with that particular application. And the commission gets to weigh that S D D, that regulation amendment on a case-by-case basis. Once that regulation amendment is adopted, they then come forward with a zone change to apply that to that specific property. And with that comes another round of more detailed plans and that follows your normal special exception permit process. So so even after this, if this regulation is viewed favorably and adopted, any application for a specific S D D still has to follow two different steps that come before this permission.
Right. And but then this would be two separate public hearings, is that what you're saying?
Yes, there'd be a hearing for the regulation amendment to adopt the language of that special development district. And then there would be a special exception or a zone change, which would follow the special exception requirements for that to actually apply to that to that property.
And this commission has the ability to change this at any time they want, right?
That's correct. The commission has the ability to add additional.
Subtract.
Exactly. That's correct.
Okay, that's all I have, Mike.
Language to this, you mean?
Yeah, you have, we have a right to change the language.
To this amendment.
To this amendment. If we want, if we want to revisit this, we could change the language to this amendment, right? To this text amendment, right?
It would have to be at another public hearing, yes.
Right. I'm saying, but we could bring it up on by ourselves to change it.
Yes.
Right. That's that's kind of like any of our regulations, though. That falls under like every one of our regulations.
No, but I'm saying that, you know, this is something that's just not in stone, like it's down the years down the road. If there's another commission here that doesn't think that this is going to work and wants to change it, either tweak it, make it better or make it.
Right. But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that's for every regulation in our book.
Right. But I'm saying that this, like sometimes if we if we change something, people are grandfathered in. And I don't believe that's this, if it's a text amendment, right?
If if the if once this language is adopted, if someone comes before the commission with a special development district application and that goes through and is through the normal course and that's approved, that would be adopted and part of the reg, so that would be memorialized at that time. But if the commission wanted to change the M D D or the S D D process moving forward, they could certainly do that.
That's what I'm saying. So it's not like if somebody comes and says, well, I had this development was at 15 acres, now I have 15 acres. But if we changed this text amendment and we said now we only want 10 acres, they can't come in front of us and say they want to be grandfathered in because we already approved one.
They'd have to come with another amendment.
Yeah, I agree with with Chairman O'Reilly, Chairman O'Reilly. And I think that the beauty of all of these is that the commission gets to view each project on a case-by-case basis. And just because someone says, well, you approved this S D D over there, doesn't matter because each one can stand on its own and the commission has complete discretion to approve or deny and can take solace that this type of legislative action is very well-founded and protected in the court system and has and has been withheld, you know, has has lived up to appeals and things like that. And I believe George Benson even mentioned during the regulation subcommittee meeting that they've had applications that were challenged and ultimately they were correct in their decision and those decisions can hold up. So I think from a planning tool and a land use stand plan, land use standpoint, this type of methodology is is really gives the commission more strength and discretion to stand on things versus a regular application that comes before the commission that has to, you know, meet certain criteria and it's difficult for the commission to deny it. This process, you have complete control and you really have a lot more flexibility on what you can require of applicants and what you can look at when processing an application.
Commissioner, am I in?
Kev, I want to revisit the 65% two bedrooms. I'm more, I'd like to see that number come down a little. As you showed in your chart before with some of the other projects, some were at 58, some were at 66, so on and so forth. So so obviously they can make a living doing what they're doing at a lower number. And I think in in my eyes, obviously just speaking for myself, I'd like to see that number 60% at least and at least close that gap between the between the one bedrooms and the two bedrooms a little bit.
Okay, well, I can, I can tell you that the biggest component to a lot of those other developments and we wanted to show you those again, we're being very straightforward with you. So so one of the biggest components of some of those other projects is they don't have an affordability requirement. So there's no restriction on profitability of a project because they don't have to dedicate 10% of that stock to be needed affordable. So by by adding the affordability component, it, you know, a lot of these projects probably could not have been built if they were required to set aside 10% of those units to be affordable. And that's and that's one of the things that we talked through at length from a, from a, from an applicant team is, you know, how can we, how can we make this work and how can we, we can address the concerns? So that's part of the biggest consideration that we have is that because there's a 10% affordable, so now 10% of those units are going to be at a much lower rental rate, you know, below market, it affects the overall costs for the overall project. And when, you know, when you look at, you know, operating these types of facilities, the rental requirements and things like that, I think one of the biggest things that a lot of people don't understand is the tax implications and liabilities associated with these types of development. When you invest so heavily and to make these projects really, really nice and and extremely luxurious, the tax bill associated with these units is quite quite impressive, I guess you'd say, from a municipality standpoint. I'll tell you, you know, projects in Glastonbury, some of the taxes are, you know, per unit are are almost at par with some, you know, modest, single-family homes. So when you weigh all of that and you weigh what what would be invested in a community like this, further restricting the number of two bedrooms essentially makes some of these projects non-viable. And I think that's just one other consideration and and I'd be, I'm not sure if, you know, we may maybe we'll need to reconvene and and take a quick recess. So like we kind of convene with the client, but I'm not sure if 60% will allow for this type of project to come to Monroe. And and that's, you know, trying to be completely upfront and and open with you as a commission because we do believe that this is, this could be a good addition to the community. And this is the type of project that if the commission's going to be considering any kind of multifamily, I would want to see this type of project come forward. You know, because it is, it is something that the community can be proud of more than what you may get with other lesser developers who may not want to have the same level of finishes and the same level of of
I totally understand. Do you want to reconvene with your people now or do you want to wait?
Well, I guess I'd like to hear other questions and then we can maybe come back to this.
Okay, because I'm, I I get you, I hear you. I still would like to see that number a little bit lower. But we could go on, so.
I'm good.
A few questions. Well, some were already answered. I agree with Bruno. I'd like to see the number a little lower. I know that this commission, before I was here, did a lot of research on local towns and what their percentages were, and that's how we came to ours. I'm also okay with the whole design district. I would be interested in exploring, including properties that are less than two acres and give those property owners the opportunity to do some creative things. And I just want to be clear that I'm, I'm, I like the idea. I just feel as though we're developing this specifically just to build this project and we're kind of ignoring every other opportunity. I haven't really heard what other businesses we could bring in, if there's been any other interest if we do this. So I would like to hear more about the the percentages as Bruno asked.
Mike? All right, then. I have a question. Well, under 5.2.2C, you have minimum district size shall be two acres. Why did you put that in there? If you're limiting the development to 15 acres or more.
Right. So if you remember, the the Route 25 Design District is something that can be applied to any property that's two acres or more. So that's why it must be two acres for the district size. So again, you, a developer or an applicant who has, you know, one parcel that's two acres in size or even two parcels that equal two acres in size, they could say, I'm applying for a special development district at this address and it exceeds two acres. So that special development district can then have additional flexibility, like we've talked about how it was applied in Newtown and others. So they could say for this particular property, because of geometric constraints or things like that, we may want to, you know, we may request that the commission consider a smaller setback or a different setback or a different parking requirement or a different use that isn't allowed in the underlying zone.
Does that have to, that has to be then listed under 523, correct, permitted uses?
So so that's that's part of what gets established when someone applies for an S D D. So the the process would be, we come in for an application, we call it Special Development District Number One because it's a sequential process. And that Special Development District Number One has a set of of criteria within it that the that the applicant is looking for the commission to consider for that particular property. So so for example, in Newtown where the tractor supply is, the underlying zone of that property where tractor supply sits is residential. Now, it's in the South Main Village Design District. It was identified as an area where they wanted development, but they didn't go and change the underlying zone. But they put it in the S, the South Main Village Design District. A special development district was proposed for that property and they said, we want to build the tractor supply here, we want to add retail as a permitted use on this particular prop, this particular parcel. And then they looked at, you know, other considerations that they wanted the commission to look at in order to make that property viable for that particular use. And then the commission looked at that favorably and then they came in for a formal that next step and then they approved the tractor supply and now it goes into operation. Another example, we just finished an application in Newtown for the office building across the street from Red Rooster. They wanted to add a restaurant component into some of their existing vacant space. That restaurant use wasn't permitted in the underlying district. It was actually an industrial district along Route 25. We proposed a special development district specific to that property. And as part of that regulation for that special development district, we said they're allowed to have restaurants. And then the commission looked at that regulation and they said, we agree that would be a good use for this property. And they approved that special development district. We then had to go through that second step with a formal site plan and all those details designed and then that was also approved. So it's just.
So do we, wouldn't that, wouldn't restaurant and et cetera need to be listed under permitted uses, though, in this regulation?
Well, no. What we did is we made it that only properties over 15 acres could pursue multifamily. So rather than, so the permitted uses get listed on each individual special development district, but through the language that we proposed, only properties over 15 acres could do multifamily.
So in other words, if I have a five-acre lot and I want to come in and do a restaurant or something in a residential area, I could come, the first step would be to come in and instead of changing it to a business district, change it to an M D D.
Well, it'd be, you would change it to an S D D because it lies within.
S D.
Right. The the M D D is simply a geographic area along Route 25 that's eligible for an S D D.
So that would be my first step then to ask for that zone change.
To a special development district, correct.
But there's no regulation that allows restaurants in a special development district, correct?
Well, correct. Each special development district writes its own reg as part of that process.
All right. So this is just allowing people to come for special development to do, to apply to create a special development district, which then they will ask for X, Y, and Z in.
Correct. Exactly.
And we decided that something.
Getting back to the two acres, that's just in case somebody with a smaller lot wants to do something different. And you didn't want to really, you didn't want to just create 15-acre lots or more.
Correct. We, and that was something that we had talked about that we see, you know, I think, I think this is a really good planning tool in general. And while we did, while we wanted to try to, again, walk before we run, we proposed two acres as a minimum. But I I know and I understand that there's a lot of people who've expressed interest in applying this to smaller, lesser parcels. That's that's within the commission's discretion to to adopt that as part of adopting this regulation. We didn't change our language. But the commission can certainly do that as part of their deliberation. And and I know Rick can can talk you guys through that in more detail, too. You do have the ability to change the language before you, but the language that we're proposing, it does have the two-acre minimum because, you know, we didn't want to necessarily open it up to all the parcels and go through that exercise of, well, every one of these could possibly possibly be eligible. But if the commission thinks that's something they want to do, they certainly are within their rights to reduce that two-acre minimum requirement.
So if I had a 10-acre lot and I wanted to do multifamily, I'd have to come back for an S D D and then change and put that in.
With the language as presented to the commission, only properties over 15 acres can pursue multifamily.
So what would be my path if I wanted to do something on a 10-acre lot? You don't have one.
Restaurant.
You don't really have one.
Restaurant or a tractor. Like another thing, we need a hypothetical, I think.
No, you don't, they, we don't have an avenue for that person. The thing is, we have to understand that they're cornering the market on this, right? So like on that, on that strip...
For family, for multifamily.
Multi-families.
But there's a lot of other things that this can...
Again, Mike was talking about multi-families. So if he has a 10-acre lot for a multifamily, they've kind of cornered the market on that where they, where they've limited it to those 15 acres and I believe there's only two, maybe three.
And I think the reason behind that was because we were pushing back on it. That's why it went to 15 acres.
So Kevin, if I came to you as a developer and I wanted to do this on a 10-acre lot, what would you advise me as to my steps to go forward?
So, so to answer your question, Chairman O'Reilly, if someone came to me and said, hey, I want to do an apartment project on 10 acres, I'd say, you have to go modify the special development district regulations to allow for multifamily properties to, multifamily projects to be considered on parcels less than 10 acres or, or less than 15 acres. Because right now, under 5.2.3, projects 15 acres or more in size within the MDD are also eligible to pursue multifamily residential uses.
So that would, that would require another text amendment then?
That would be a proposed text amendment to this regulation if this regulation is adopted, correct?
Change this regulation.
Thank you.
Right.
Yeah. So are the other commissioners okay with the location? We briefly touched on that last time. We are excluding the Stepney area, even though there's never been, there have been attempts to create a Stepney Village District, but it never got off the drawing board. We okay with excluding Stepney Village District?
I'm okay with it.
Well, this would be the time to...
Like I said, but that doesn't, but that, that doesn't change this, this text amendment. We can always add that to this text amendment, right? So it doesn't make a difference. It doesn't change this at all. This, this will still stand. We just can extend it if we want to. That will have nothing to do with changing this.
Okay. That's true. And we're okay with the public water requirement, the 30 units per building? Those are the highlights that I've been, the only question we have is the percent of two-bedroom. Is that correct at this point?
Well, at least with me it is and I think Nicole also.
What's the percent at, what are they asking?
65. 65. Not more than.
So Kevin, hypothetically, how many units are you looking at in that potential development?
Hypothetically, it'd be 174.
Total units?
Total.
Yeah.
And, and the current plan would have 65% or so to be two-bedroom. You know, and I know, but we, we hear the concern. I know Bruno has expressed that 60% is really a more comfortable number and we, the beauty of some of this remote is I'm actually able to communicate with my team during the process and we're willing to accept the commission to modify the language to reduce that to be 60% two-bedrooms instead of 65. But I think that would be an...
So Kev, Kevin...
Below that, there wouldn't be this project.
Okay. Wonderful. So Kev, 174 units is what you're thinking about for your project, correct?
Correct.
So that leaves you with 17 affordable, affordable units, correct?
17.
17.4. 17.4 if you want to be exact. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so 18. Awesome.
Probably all single.
Now, are they, how do you guys decipher what's, what those 18 are? Do you guys just say it's 18 one-bedrooms or is it nine and, nine or 10 and eight?
Because my thought process would be out of the 18, you're probably going to make
17.
Usually, I can take a stab at that if it's, if it's okay.
Stab away, Joe.
Usually, usually you try to have a similar breakdown in units within the affordable as you do within the market rate.
Okay, so what does that mean?
It means that you, that you would have roughly 65% two-bedrooms within the affordable units. So the affordable units probably need to be 18. So two-thirds of them or 12 could be two-bedroom units.
So he's saying they'll continue the same ratio?
That works for me, 60%. I feel better at 60.
Kevin, do you know what Newtown's percentage is?
Newtown doesn't have a restriction on unit mix. Newtown multifamily regulations only says they have to be, there's no more, they can't be more than three bedrooms, but it doesn't specify what a project is, what the makeup of a project is. And I'd say that's actually pretty standard. Very rarely do communities actually restrict specific unit mixes. You know, we've already gone beyond what Newtown does because we're not even allowing three bedrooms to be even considered. We can only be up to two bedrooms. So I think with the additional restrictions that we've talked about, it definitely does set Monroe apart a little bit from some of the surrounding areas.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I haven't really seen this, this kind of restriction specified. Usually the, you know, the town allows the, the free market to decide what's the best unit mix and then you can look at for a particular project, does it make sense? Do we get an overall benefit? Do we think there are impacts to things? You get all that information later. So I just, I wanted to add, it is the kind of real specific requirement. That's an example of what I was talking about earlier where sometimes you can micromanage the rules upfront so much that you kill a project. And I've, I'm worried we're right on the cusp of doing that, so I want that out.
Okay. I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody here wants to kill any projects. I just think that this is new, new territory for us and, and, and again, a person like me goes on feeling, where other people read stats and so on and so forth. And to me, that 60% number, a little bit closer to the, to the one-bedroom feels comfortable for me and especially if you're going to go with that ratio on the, on the affordables, that's, to me, I'm comfortable with something like that. I could only speak for myself again, but that's kind of how I go with it.
Kevin, are you familiar with the, the project you're doing in Newtown now? The one that you're putting all of, I don't know if it's multifamily or...
There's, there's a couple. There's a, there's a, there's a development that was approved in Hollyville. That was an apartment project off of Exit Nine and there's also, I think it's a, I'm not sure if it's Town Homes or apartments right in Sandy Hook.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have the statistics on what those mixes are, but I know that again, Newtown doesn't have a, a restriction on, on unit mix.
So those are apartments? That's on the one that's in Sandy Hook is that those are apartments there?
I'm not sure if Sandy Hook is apartments. I think it is based on just kind of driving by and viewing the buildings.
Did you see that project? Oh, it's coming out nice. They did a nice job. They did a nice job there. All right, that's, I was just, I was just familiar because I drive by that all the time and they, that came out pretty good.
Any other commissioners have any comments or questions? If not, before we go to the public, do staff have any comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, staff is very comfortable with this type of zoning technique. It's very similar to what I used in the city of Shelton, which was the planned development district. As I indicated to you over the years, it was restricted in the early days to the Route Eight corridor area and then it grew and it got out of control. So it's important to do this incrementally, which is being suggested and I'm hearing it loud and clear, which makes me feel very comfortable. You want to do this very slowly and methodically, but you need staff to feel comfortable with this technique. I, I do have the background. I've watched Newtown. They're very pleased with it, as you heard at the subcommittee level. It's a great zoning tool. Secondly, I'd like to read the 2021 POCD, which we all have. The economic development goal recommends fostering a vibrant economy that provides residents and visitors with access to good services, employment, opportunities while diversing the town's property tax base. And one of the objectives is to review the town zoning regulations and make appropriate amendments to incentivize investment and development that revitalizes properties and provides a civic amenity or benefit. So we, we have something that's consistent with our brand-new 2021 POCD. Staff during our deliberation needs to provide further text changes for consideration and that's going to be very important. I am going to show you the category of what's being proposed this evening and then alternatives. I've heard, staff has heard loud and clear that you'd like to see some adjustments made and I will show you that. So you'll ultimately decide before if and when you adopt these regulations, what, where the changes need to be. So I'll do that in category form. We will also review the flow chart again. It's important that you understand the whole flow mechanism as Kevin just showed you tonight, but I'll show you again, I'll give you an example so you have the comfort level that you need to have. This is a new zoning technique for this community, so you definitely want to feel comfortable. We need to discuss alternative, alternative affordable component. This, the subject site that we're talking about wants to do market rate, but clearly we need to address the affordable housing. We're going to do it in our 2022 Affordable Housing Plan and there are techniques that you can consider, like Affordable Housing Trust Fund, like we do with the Open Space Trust Fund. So there are alternatives and I'll provide those as well too. We need to get that language in the regulation. And lastly, I'm hearing from property owners that they would like to use this technique on Route 111. Once again, we're focusing on 25. At the moment, you're leaving out the Stepney Village area. It sounds like that's the consensus. That's the commission's call, but I'm already hearing the desire to use this technique. The market has changed. There are so many hybrids now being considered. Our zoning regulations don't address them. We have the mixed use, that's the lower part of 25 only. So I just wanted to, to discuss those components. So our deliberation is going to be very involved as a... That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then we'll go to the public for this text amendment, REA 2021. Are there any members of the public here tonight that have any questions or comments for the commission? Please identify yourselves. Any members of the public here tonight that have any comment or question? Hearing none, then we'll take it back to the applicant for any closing remarks.
So again, I just want to thank, thank the commission for, for the extended focus on this application and I definitely think that due to the complexity, I'm, I'm pleased we came up with the approach that we did because we were able to tackle really important issues on a, on a piece-by-piece basis. So certainly something I'm going to be looking to probably employ on other complex projects. So thank you for that. And I think that, again, as, as Rick mentioned, we believe this regulation amendment is consistent with the, both the former POCD and the newly adopted or soon-to-be-adopted POCD. We created a, we've added a, with the adoption of this regulation, we've added a planning tool to your quiver, an additional thing that the commission can use to consider applications to, to get creative with property owners and to effectively, you know, regulate and mandate positive change for the community. As we discussed, you know, our draft was specific to a certain area with specific limitations so we could walk before we run. You know, we, we think that the, so if the commission wants to consider modifications that aren't, don't create more restrictive, we think that's fine, but, but again, we did offer a 60-40 mix from a two-bedroom, 60% two-bedrooms is really the minimum, so we definitely plead, you know, ask the commission not to modify it beyond that. But I think in general, you know, we appreciate the commission's time. We appreciate the commission's thoughtful, thoughtful consideration of this and we respectfully request approval and we'd be excited to get to the next step. So thank you very much.
Hey, Kevin. Chairman O'Reilly, this is Greg Kamidolsky, part of the development team and I also am working with Sabrina Keeler, the property owner of 127 Main and I very much appreciate the conversation and the discussion tonight. Just want to finish with one quick point, which is, you know, we've been talking about the bedroom mix and we, on the development side, would very much like to keep it at 65%. I understand there's some entities could drop it to 60 and you all would discuss it amongst yourselves. We would like to keep it at 65, but an important consideration in the bedroom mix is the affordability component and the affordability component parameters that Kevin has suggested in his text and that, you know, we, we need to basically keep those parameters in place, which is 80% of the median income. That, that can't really change too much from our perspective anyway. And you, you adopted those parameters in another zone. We'd like, that's why we adopted it. We'd like to keep it and run with it in this zone. So 65, 60% with the parameters and the affordable housing component that we suggest in the text is, is important to make this, the project economically viable. And again, thank you for, for your conversation and, and discussion tonight.
I got just confused. All right, so I'm so confused right now after that guy. I don't understand what you'd like to, keep it at 65%, but you're okay with 60%?
Yeah, we're okay with 60% as long as the, if you, and what section are we talking about, Kevin? Where would you discuss the...
I, I think, I think Greg, I think, I don't, I don't want to overcomplicate anything and I think that's what we've done with this commission is we've adopted the same affordability component that you've already adopted. It's already in the reg. So I think just to, just to not confuse or anything, I think Greg's basically saying he's supportive of the language that we have before you and we, you know, we, you not change the affordability side that's already written into the regs.
Yep. That's exactly right.
But we weren't planning on changing the affordability side. Wow. How is that part of this? All right, so Kevin, do you have anything else?
No, I think, I think that's it. I think we, we've said enough and we greatly appreciate the commission's consideration. So thank you.
All right, then we'll close the hearing. Yes? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have the public hearing number five on the agenda, SCP 2021-06, file number 1631A. S C P 2021-06, file number 1631A5, Victoria Drive. That has been asked to be continued by the applicant. The last public hearing for tonight, number six on the agenda, R A A 2021-05, number 1019E, is the Town of Monroe's text amendments that we reviewed at our last meeting on May 20. However, due to the absence of two commissioners, we decided to hold off on closing that hearing. So that is still open, Rick.
Okay, as the chairman indicated, we reviewed the proposed text changes in detail. Two regular members are not present, so I'm going to go through it again. Commendations, great. Consensus from the commission. As was reported, these text amendments are a result of the zoning regulations subcommittee. This is, for lack of a better word, round two. Round one was the outdoor dining, which the commission adopted. This deals with regulations dealing with outdoor storage and some miscellaneous items and. So let's begin with page two. Right now, the outdoor storage area is restricted to 20% of the grocery store area. It was suggested to identify all of the commercial industrial zones and allow up to 20% for the commercial zones and up to 40% for the industrial zones, restricting it to the side and rear of the properties. This formula was established in part with the zoning subcommittee and input from property owners and from brokers who have contacted the office, asking dirtier fire to see some more flexibility due to the market conditions. So the B1, B2, L O R, up to 20%. Industrial 1, 2, and 3 up to 40%. We're eliminating on paragraph five, the contents of outdoor storage shall be temporary in nature. Obviously, that's not the intent. Moving down to the bottom of the page, under the signs, we're eliminating a restriction that is inconsistent with state statute. No variance shall be granted, but no concern in the sign. This was also recommended by town attorney. Moving up to page four, freestanding signs shall be no closer than 10 feet from any property line, street line side. It was suggested by the property owners that the commission should consider a lesser setback of five feet to five feet that will not interfere with sightline. It will also allow the snow shelf to be contained. As you know, in Monroe, it's pretty. Rideaways are very wide. The shoulders are very wide. We have sidewalks. Sufficient. That is a judgment call. A lot of towns use 10 feet. But that was a request by the businesses to bring it closer in the spirit of cooperation. That's a call of the commission.
Greg, what happens if they don't comply with this? What happens with the five feet? They put it on the road.
No, it's five feet from the property line. You have the edge of the pavement and then the rest of the rideaway where the sidewalks are.
Right, and they have to have a?
A private property. Right now, it's 10 feet in.
No, I got that part. Well, people aren't doing 10 feet in right now, anyway. There's signs, I just looked.
Well, this is for the permanent sign.
A permanent sign? I'm talking about the freestanding sign. Okay, I got the permanent.
This is permanent pole signs.
Okay, I'm on to the freestanding part.
So it's a judgment call. It's not going to be a major problem if you say, leave it alone. That's your call. It's an insignificant reduction, but in the spirit of cooperation, talking to the business owner, they put that out there for the commission. Moving on to page nine. This is the bigger one. Right now, the commission only allows one portable sign. After our last discussion, staff was throwing out up to three. I asked the commissioners to think about it, look at the various sites. Tonight, I'm saying let's limit it to up to two portable signs, maybe permitted. And then adding more language that says, "The zoning enforcement officer shall determine the number and the locations." As this commission is aware, large-scale shopping centers with businesses that are far removed from the roadway, they like to have their sandwich sign showing special events. You don't see it from the road. They also would like a second sign out by the road. So I'm reducing what was originally thrown out for up to three to a maximum of two. I know this commission is very concerned with the proliferation of these portable signs. Keeping in mind, they have to go in every night, and that's an enforcement issue. Some of them do it right now, some of them don't, as we know. So I'm suggesting that it be limited to up to two. Maybe the Z E O determines the number, no more than two, and where they go, and they have to be brought in every night.
So we don't want to, we don't want to put some kind of setback off the street line?
Well, it's going to be on the private property.
Yeah, I got that, but I'm talking about?
Right now, it's zero. The signs that are up there are zero. Some of them try to encroach into the right way, you know?
They're in, well, there's a lot of them that are right on the street line. Today, I noticed that because I was looking to get out somewhere, and I could see that that's a problem with sightline.
So that's why we have to permit this.
I got that, but we have to be able to have some kind of setback, like we have on other signs, so that they're off the road, no?
Yeah, well, that's why the Z E O, when he processes each individual application, determines how many. I'm suggesting not more than two. We're going back and forth on two or three, and the locations. And they have to be brought in every night. The application's forms say who the party is responsible to bring it in and their phone number. So with the Z E O and the forms, we'll be able to determine where they go. And if they violate it, it gets eliminated.
So if they're allowed two, we're not saying two on the street. We're saying like one in front of their place of business and then one on the street?
We have the extremes. We have small strip shopping centers that face the street. They don't need two.
Right.
And then we have the larger ones with businesses far removed. They like to have their sidewalk sales, and they like to show the customers in the parking lot that there's a sidewalk sale. But they also like to show it out on the main drag.
That's reasonable.
So I think that's a fair compromise. But once again, it's your call. Right now, the executive order, it's not a free-for-all, but it's a lot more loose than it should be.
I mean, I wouldn't want to see like two signs from the same company on the street. But definitely giving them visibility from the road is, I think it's important to the business.
Yeah, our Z E O is very aware of the commission not wanting a problem.
No.
And right now, we only allow one. With what has gone on the last year, you know, it's been not a total free-for-all, but they've had their ability to put up.
I mean, yeah, but this last year is a different situation. This is.
Maybe I ought to reel them in now, Greg.
You know, now that things are starting to open up, I think we can.
So Rick, you don't have them promote their business?
Absolutely. The good thing, the A-frame signs now are professionally constructed.
Yeah, they're not, they're a lot nicer.
And they look terrible. You know, with handwriting.
Let's go through the commissioners for questions. Commissioner Condon.
Hold on, don't you have another? Hold on, I think he has another section.
Oh, I thought you were done.
Yeah, and then the last page, on page 12, "We are eliminating, there shall be no outdoor display or sale of." Case in point, Noble Gas wants the propane cage. It's prohibited right now. And prohibits it. If you eliminate it, they have to come back in with a modification of site plan showing the details. And just so you understand, on the right side of the building where there's a sidewalk and landscaping area, they like to put it on the right side. Because the commission is not going to allow it on the front sidewalk.
No.
That was the whole intent of this very rigid regulation, is to say it's not permitted. The propane cages are here. It's an integral part of the business model, as you all know. We all use it. It's where it goes. It needs to be properly screwed. And then lastly, the number eight, "The rental or sale of vehicles shall be permitted, pursuant to the appropriate state of the Connecticut license authorizing the selling and renting of U and News vehicles." We are being consistent with the language of the state statutes. Before, we limited to three used vehicles. That was just an arbitrary number to be consistent. And remember, the commission sees these applications. You can see a site plan. You're going to see the parking for the employees, parking for the cars that are being repaired and the cars that are for sale. I'm not taking away the site plan review. So that completes round two, which is for outdoor storage, a bit of signage, outdoor merchandise, and the consistency with the motor vehicle.
Okay, now we can take questions from the commissioners.
No question.
So my only question is on?
I'll never just one sign.
The only. Is you don't think that we should have some kind of setback, either three feet off the road or?
Leon, you're absolutely correct, but I have complete faith in Joe. Safety is paramount, and they like as much wiggle room as they can get. And in some instances, zero setback does work. In some instances, it doesn't, when you're on a radiator, on a curve.
The only reason why I'm saying that is because some of these businesses that are on like Main Street, I know for a fact, there is no way that they're going to meet any kind of a, some kind of setback from the sightline. So how do we handle that if we don't have a setback?
No, the applicant, when they come in for the zoning permit, identifies on their site plan, showing the property line and where the A-frame is going to go. We do mandate.
So basically, it's up to the Z E O to either approve it or deny it?
Right, he's, he will approve or deny the count because a lot of them will come in for two. If it's not justified, he'll say, no, one. You have frontage right on the road. The two is overkill. The whole intent here is not to allow too many signs where they're not relevant. And the last portion is, where do they go? They cannot obstruct sightline, public safety, cannot obstruct the snow shelf.
Well, we don't have that in part of this, right? It's just?
It's up to?
Up to him.
I have faith in Joe.
No, no, I understand. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that.
Because if you impose a five-foot or a 10-foot?
I'm saying, but should it be something that's up to the Z E O that if it meets a sightline requirement or any kind? Do I know?
I mean, I can strengthen that by saying, you know, so say, we have to have something in there that the sightline.
Because if it turns out to be a problem, then we're going to have to have them remove them.
Yeah.
And so we need to have some kind of language in there that to cover the town if, you know, I want somebody coming back here and say, well, that's, you had that sign up there and blocked my way, and the guy hit me, and then I don't want to get into that.
Yeah, let's keep the hearing open. We're not going to meet on the 17th because I have a vacation. So not going to meet till, well, I'm going to Texas for family reason. So our next meeting will be July 1st. So let me add that additional language, as Leon is suggesting.
That's all he need. No, don't get me wrong. Get asked, yes, with mission.
I'm okay with most of it. I wouldn't want to, the reason I wouldn't want to do a setback requirement is I'm trying to, I'm thinking of some properties like Clock Tower, for instance. And you might put their sandwich board behind bushes.
Well, I know, I understand. I'm trying to get rid of the sightline problem. And so if we can get rid of the sightline problem, I have no issue with it.
I know, again, but that's, but that's just the faith we have to have in Joe to do his job.
No, but if the guy says to me, if there's some reason that the guys can't meet a sightline thing, and he's going to say, well, you're just discriminating against me, I don't want to get into that.
Leon, you understand sightline because we've dealt with it in residential area.
Well, that's me. Well, on to the next guy.
I'm okay with the line saying the Z E O will determine where it's safe.
Yeah, man.
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to keep the hearing open or close it.
Let's see if any of the other commissioners have questions.
I disagree with Leon. I think, I think leaving it up to Joe is fine. And I'm good, I'm good with everything else. I'm good with the whole thing.
Okay, move on.
All right, I, yeah, I'm good with all the other text amendments here. Other, you know, I echo Leon's concerns on the sightlines. And I personally feel that two signs for two, two-week online permitted timeframes per year would be enough. I think they should be used for promotional purposes and not to replace the permanent signage. So I think seeing two of these signs at every business in town is going to be, is going to be disastrous.
You'd like to go back to the two-week?
Two, two-week timeframes, using these signs for promotional purposes. Otherwise, I feel like they just kind of fade into the scenery, and people don't see them anymore when they come out on a biannual basis for a particular business. It tends to catch attention, as far as I'm concerned, and.
What about a place that does like specials? Like out on the sidewalk, they put out like the sandwich board and says like, you know?
You want to see that all over town?
What if Leon's running an oil chain special? Well, that's not me.
But again, maybe not down at the road, but?
I don't do it.
Up in some of those complexes, kind of normal.
You got a lot of bits.
Some people that.
Where, think about how many sandwich signs would be out on 111.
Well, no, so again, not out on 111, sorry.
Why do we have this out? What do we have it out there for now? What is it, what do we change it to?
It's on page nine.
Yeah, I know, but I thought that we were over this.
It used to be you had to apply for a permit. You got it for a couple of weeks, right?
But now we're doing online permitting.
Right.
That's going to be a lot easier to do.
Right. I think we need to get more business-friendly at this moment.
I'm just thinking, a lot of people don't use them for special events. They're used for that today's special. You know, pumpkin spice something or, you know, and yeah, those are during events, but like.
Pumpkin spice was the first.
I like pumpkin spice, all right?
Middle of the summer.
But I mean, I'm seeing it for that purpose. And I understand down at the street, and maybe that's where the appropriateness that Joe can kind of look at is, you know, do you have to have your specials down at the street every day? Probably not. Do you want to put a?
He could only get his arms around so many things.
Mother's Day buffet out on the street once every, so yeah, that, so it's kind of weird.
Oh, you think, you think all these businesses would use signs all the time?
I don't know, but I think we have to assume that that's a possibility.
Well, I've talked to one, and they said that they thought it was tacky and wouldn't want to use it, so.
Yeah, some.
There's that element to it, in my opinion.
And that was a restaurant that said, yeah, no, I don't like that idea at all. I wouldn't use the sandwich.
When I think of a sign for a restaurant, it's more of like a deli type of place.
More of a boutique or other, it doesn't have to be a food.
And food, they like those out daily, so. Got to get a consensus of.
Down the other, Rick.
Monroe, I just don't think it's going to get out of hand.
What time, what time at night do these signs have to come off the road? Do we set a time?
Oh, yeah, at the end of the.
That's ours.
So that's.
What time is that?
Retailers are anywhere between 5:00 and 9:00. Really before dusk.
Well, then we should put something. Do you have that in there?
Something concrete?
No, but I'll put that in there, too.
Okay.
You want the sightline and?
I want, I definitely want the sightline. Call that today.
I mean, if you're going to have them take it in at, take it in at night, that means that they're going to take it in when their business is closing.
Yeah.
Not like they're going to come back two hours later after their business is closed to go.
Go later than dusk.
Buffalo Bills has one out. I can't believe, you know, special. It's 1:00 in the morning. You know what I mean? So if there's a. You know what I mean? So if there's a concrete timeframe, then-
No, that's, no, that's not, no, that's-
I think it's also say our business is at night.
That's for portable signs?
Yeah, design standards. Is page nine, section three, what Leon wants added? Is that actually in there?
I just don't want to see these things.
Page nine, section three.
No, that's for, that's for-
Is that regarding the portable signs?
No, it's for permanent signs.
Portable signs shall be-
You're not into pumpkin spice coffee?
Mine opens that up all go-
Yes.
So that is portable sign, so that, so it is in there that- Well, let's see, it has too many-
So that applies to that?
Yes.
Then we don't have to add that then. We're good.
Okay.
And we can, I'm good with this stuff.
You can add detailed standards, you know.
I thought that was for a permanent sign, because the way it's kind of confusing.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, because it's not like-
Alright, so then, um, what-
I read that too, but I thought, I thought it was for permanent signs.
You're letting Nicole talk today. It's fine.
It's so far-
It's allowed.
So far, I'm allowed.
Go ahead, Nicole.
I agree with Leon with adding the sightline.
It's in there though. We just found it.
It's already in there, perfect. Two weeks, two times a year is too restrictive. If we're going to be pro-business, I would, I would almost open it up maybe once, once every season, if there's a seasonal thing they're doing, or. I agree with Rob, though. I don't want it turning into like the complete massive signs everywhere, but I also don't want to limit businesses to just twice a year for two weeks.
So-
So.
So, Rick, what, I understand it was two weeks before, but I thought we discussed that maybe we're changing it to like six months, or three months, or four months. Were we going to do that?
It was discussed. The businesses have asked me to keep it up for the whole-
So it's being proposed now as no permit whenever they want?
Yeah, but that's not what-
Well, that's, that's because we last, I mean, I could-
I would think that's, we didn't discuss that. We discussed that we were going to change it to make it more, you know, user-friendly, I would put it that way, but not to make it that where it's going to be a freefall for a whole year. I didn't think that ever came up.
Yeah. Let me look at that again, because the executive order goes to the end of June. We're going to meet July 1st. And I'll have those standards, because it's important to get this right, be done with it.
Okay.
Then we'll definitely keep that open.
And I'll talk to Joe again. Joe was at the subcommittee meeting. The commissioners felt comfortable with his enforcement.
Are there any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
Nicole, you done?
I'm done.
Alright.
It was quick.
And then let's go to the public. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment or have any questions on the public hearing before us? Any members of the public tonight that would like to comment on this public hearing? Hearing none, we will continue the public hearing till July 1st. Pending meeting minutes. Does everyone have a copy of the planning and zoning? Meeting minutes from May 20th, 2021.
I don't have a copy, but I can't blow it anyway, so.
Alright, this is going to be O'Reilly, Condon, Westland, Panichi, and Lupo.
Dominic's not here. He hasn't been here yet. He hasn't shown up yet. Is Dominic there? There's paperwork there.
Chair, I intend a motion to accept the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion, I need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If no discussion, then I'll call the all, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Lupo, yes.
And then passes. The minutes have been adopted. So we have Cost Abundance next, number 11.
So I got number eight. You went from seven to 11? I like Mike. He went from seven to 11.
So we can, we did close the hearing on the text amendment mixed views. Do you want to deliberate on that tonight?
No.
I have one note.
If we start deliberations, can we continue them at the next meeting or no?
It'll be more meaningful with me having my exhibits to show you the different categories.
That's why I don't want to do that right now.
Pat, we're going to pay on that, thank you. So we're going to, we're going to move that to the first slide, slide first?
We'll be over here discussing something we don't have.
10's next, right? There's no nine?
There's no nine? We skipped- No, nine, let's go to 10.
Alright. There's nothing on 10. Number 11.
We're not doing a subcommittee?
Well, we don't, we didn't have one.
We're not going to schedule one?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a call, we'll sum up some dates. We want to continue with interior lots and some other regulation amendments.
I don't have a name down there.
You know, landscaping.
Yes, I understand there are other-
We'll continue discussion.
Alright, so do that offline. Now on number 11. Sorry?
I said we've made it to 11.
I have a letter.
Okay, we didn't get that one.
We all have the letter, I believe.
No, I don't.
I didn't get a letter.
I thought it was on the DS.
Nope.
You're the only one that got the letter.
We don't have a letter.
Alright, Rick, do you want to read the letter?
Can you read it, Mr. Chairman?
How long is that letter?
How long?
This letter is to Richard Schultz, Monroe Town Planner, regarding 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive, Monroe, Connecticut. Here, Mr. Schultz, as you know, this is from Attorney Finn. As you know, I represent Astro Land Holdings, who is the owner of 64 Cambridge Drive in Monroe. It is my understanding that Kevin Solley, a licensed professional engineer, working with my client, has been in touch with you about the intent to stockpile clean fill on 64 Cambridge Drive to be utilized in the grading and filling on 4 Independence Drive. As you know, and as discussed during hearings before the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission, a major aspect of the remediation of 4 Independence Drive is to fill the hole and regrade the property in order to restore the watershed. My client has recently learned that there will be clean fill available within the next month or two, and intends to stockpile this fill on 64 Cambridge Drive, and subsequently remove it and utilize it for the remediation slash restoration project on 4 Independence Drive. The estimates of the amount of material that will be required to accomplish this goal is approximately 500,000 cubic yards of clean fill. Both Inland Wetlands and Planning and Zoning have expressed the view that that an important goal is to fill the hole and restore the watershed as soon as possible. A major issue in achieving this goal is the difficulty of finding a continuous and reliable source of clean fill. Experience dictates that clean fill should be obtained whenever it is available, particularly with the important goal of restoring the property as quickly as possible. Section 6.4.15 of our regulations. Do we have copies of that for the commissioners?
I attached that to the-
I have it. Does anyone else have that?
No.
Can we put that up on the board?
Let me, let me get copies.
We're going to take a break.
Alright, why don't we take a five-minute break?
Why don't you read the rest of the letter while he gets the thing?
It's given such a great chance. Unless you want to entertain comments from Kevin Solley? And I'll make copies right now.
Yeah, I think we need to see the regulation. So I'll finish reading it. It's, I'm almost done. Anyway, the regulation that Rick's going to get for you allows stockpiling of material and removal of the same without the requirements of a permit. That is a a fill and grading excavation fill permit. Please see section 6.4.15. B, which we'll be getting. This specifically provides creating of stockpiles of material and removal of the same shall not be considered as a fill or excavation operation requiring a separate permit. Since the intent is to stockpile the material and then remove it, we respectfully assert that the plan as outlined does not require a permit. I write you as a courtesy to let you know that is my client's intent to stockpile clean fill on its property at 64 Cambridge Drive and then remove it.
Where's he going to remove it to?
To 4 Cambridge, to the priority.
Once we approve it.
If you feel that additional discussion with the town council regarding our interpretation of this regulation is necessary, please have them contact me. Thank you very much for this, for your attention to this matter. Signed by Stephen A. Finn. So basically, here comes the, we have a regulation that allows for stockpiling materials and removing them without a excavation or fill permit. And you'll see where that language is.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, dude.
It's 6.4.15, section name.
Let me tell you. Oh, it only says question.
Says creating of stockpiles of material and removal of the same shall not be considered as a fill or excavation operation requiring a separate permit, which is what they're proposing. However, the stockpiling of material is prohibited without a permit. So they're not going to just stockpile the material. They're going to bring it in and then move it into the excavated area that's requiring fill. That will be a permit before they go ahead and do that, but the intention is to stockpile and then move, not just stockpile. So with that intention, it appears that they are, it appears to me, and that's my interpretation, that they are allowed to do this without a permit. However, what I want to talk about tonight, the rest of you, is how do you read section B? Do you think that we should allow, or they can go ahead and stockpile the material with the intent of removing it to the hole?
But I don't believe that this, I firmly don't believe, and I think we need to get an opinion. Did we get an opinion from the attorney on this?
Yes, we talked with attorney today.
We got a legal opinion on this?
Well, the chairman will convey that to you right now, verbal.
She felt that it was up to us that this is somewhat ambiguous language, and that it's up to the commission to interpret the language, and that we can decide amongst us.
Yeah, because I, it doesn't tell you how much material you can bring on, or how mu, I think that this-
It doesn't tell you how much, but in-
I think that they could stockpile the material if they dug it up on their own property, but I don't-
It doesn't specify that. We have to-
I understand that, that's why-
Exactly what it says here.
So I'd like to get a legal opinion on this.
We got a legal opinion.
Well, you got one, but I didn't get a written one. I want a written legal opinion.
That it's up to us to make the decision to interpret the-
Right, that's what I want to see, what her legal opinion on this is. For me, see.
You want to see it in writing?
I'm not going to vote on this unless I know if it's in writing that-
I don't think it's a vote, right?
It's a vote.
They're just informing us.
They're telling us they're doing it.
There's no vote involved.
It's just, don't be surprised when they start doing it.
But I want to get everyone's opinion about it.
Well, my opinion-
Chairman, the, Mr. Solley is here to address.
Yeah, we have any questions? So Ryan, did you have, what are your feelings?
Anywhere else in the regulations is the term stockpile defined?
Under the filling and grading. Normally, when you do more than 500 cubic yards, because that's mainly for residential purposes.
So more than 500, it's considered a stockpile?
I went for filling, but when you're doing excavation in an industrial area, it's filling and grading. SCP application. Bottom line.
If it's more than 500, it's considered filling and grading, okay? So as long as they don't stockpile more than 500?
This regulation says creating a stockpile of material and removal.
So my question is, do we, in the regulation, do we have the definition of the word stockpile within our regulation? Have we defined stockpile?
That's, that's why, that's why the special counsel says the commission's going to discuss it.
Yeah.
And get a consensus.
Okay, yeah, I mean, as long as we don't have another definition we're missing here.
So, so this is sort of, let me get to my understanding here. So you're saying to me that somebody could come in here, and that any property owner in this town can bring in clean fill and stockpile as much clean fill as they want on their property? It could be 400,000 yards, and the town's not going to have an issue with that?
No, you're absolutely right. This is-
What I'm saying to you is, is that what the attorney basically read this as being?
This is not a well-written provision in the regulation.
I understand that, but I'm-
Maybe we should bring that up in a subcommittee and start writing something?
Well, after tonight.
What I'm saying to you is that I don't think that this, what this meant, that this, what this, this meant, this must have had some other part to it than just this one little part. And I'm saying, you got, you got, I like it to get it in writing, or I like to find out, because I don't think, I believe me, that I don't think that if you allow this to happen on one piece of property, that you're going to have to allow this to happen on every piece of property that's in this town. So I think that we need to look into this and have the commission be advised on this before we move out, move along with this, because you could put this anywhere. This could be on any industrial piece of property. This could be on any property you're saying that they could stockpile material to move it, to put it to somewhere else later on. Then we've had issues with that before. We shut people down for doing that. And I know that because for, for one, we have a case on, 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 what do you call it? That we shut the guy down because he had fill on his property. So this, there's got to be something else in here that we're missing. Because we went to court, and we've lost, we went to court. We have a couple cases in court right now where people stockpile fill on, on property, and we went after them. So I don't understand where the lawyer came up, and she's not here to discuss this with us tonight. So I don't understand where she came up with this from.
Well, this is the language, and that's already in our regulations.
But I'm saying to you, Mike, we shut people down in this town already. We, I could, I could read them out to you, but I really don't want to do it in the public hearing.
Doesn't know the history of how this regulation came to be.
Yeah, I understand that, but if we, we shut them down in court, okay? And they went to court, we had some legal bounds to stand on with the fill. We have people that have done this before. It's not that this is not, and I'm not saying to them or anything like that. I'm saying you're opening up a can of worms here by allowing this to go on, because we've already shut people down. We've, we're in court on some cases on this. So I don't know where this all came from, or how she, she read this, but I could, I could give you a couple of examples of them that I'm not going to give you right now, because it's not my thing, but I'm sure you're well aware of them, Rick, and you have to be aware of them. I mean, I could tell you a couple that I already know about that, that it happened to, and it turned into be a big court battle. So I, I mean, I already know, because I'm well aware of what goes on. I've been on this commission long enough, and we've, we've, we've went over this. Even when Bill was here, we went over this, and we, and we've, we've, we ended up in court.
Okay, I know what I have to do at my end.
Other opinions?
So I agree that it says the stockpiling of material is prohibited without a permit approval by the commission, so we do have to give them a permit approval?
Right, but the sentence before that, it seems to imply that as long as it's temporary, you're creating it and then removing it, it's temporary. It doesn't really specify that.
Mike, I'm reading it the same way, that just to stockpile requires a permit. But if you're going to stockpile and remove it to fill the hole in this situation, then you don't need a permit.
That's how I read it also.
So for A, though, my question is-
500 cubic- A is for residential purposes.
For resident, thank you. Okay.
Okay, just because I don't know, what, how big is 500 cubic yards? Anybody know?
It's not, it's not a large area.
A lot.
But I think we should update this anyways to make that specifically safe for residential.
It's 10, it's 10 tri-axles.
It's 500 cubic yards?
Tri-axles, 20 cubic yards.
That's a lot.
It's not a lot. No, it's a tri-axle.
No, 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 I'm just saying, but for a homeowner- No, 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 I'm just saying, but for a homeowner.
500 is a standard for residential.
I'm just saying, 500 cubic yards for a residential person, that's, that's kind of a lot.
It really isn't.
No? Okay, we're not there, it doesn't matter, I'm, I'm off subject.
Remember, Monroe, Monroe and the surrounding towns are not level. 500 gets lost quite, quite easily.
Quickly, but you're talking thousands of thousands of yards you want to bring in here, right?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a different story. Now, that could be 400,000 yards.
Materials and the removal.
Leon, you're right, you have an existing regulation adopted, I don't know the history on that.
But the thing is, is that, to tell you the truth, and I know for a fact that we went after people for this.
No, you're absolutely right.
And so I don't understand.
With what basis, is what you're asking?
They had stockpiled material on the property.
Right.
And we went after them.
There must have been a basis.
Still in court.
Were they using on the property, Leon, or were they just, were they using that property on the material, on the, on the property?
For stockpile material, they're, they're.
Were they selling it?
Well, that's what they do, they're taking and removing. And so what they'll do is they'll bring in, in fill, or they'll bring in tons of fill, they can bring in 400,000 yards of fill, and then what they do is either they process it on the property or they clean it up, and then they send it out and stuff like that. So if you allow, and I, and I, and I really want a legal opinion that I could read, and I think that we should do a little bit more research on this and see about these other cases that we shut people down on and why, you know, that's, I'm saying to you, just like, I know we have court cases out there and stuff like this.
Okay, so here, here's the issue I have. And, and again, prefaced it by saying it's me. We need to fill this hole. They are willing to bring in clean fill and stockpile it to put into that hole. I'm assuming it's going to get certified and stuff. So as a commission, if we want this hole ever filled and they have an ability to get clean fill, we also need to understand, like, like, this is the beginning stages of getting this hole filled.
But they don't want to come in here.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm just telling you how I feel. If they have an ability to get clean fill, that's certified clean, and store it for a little while before they put it into a hole, that we want filled anyway, to finally get maybe some closure on this, I just, I don't know. Me personally, stockpile away. You need.
What I'm saying to you is, okay, first of all, if you allow them to do that, then you allow everybody in this town to do that.
I understand.
Right, so they're not coming here for a fill permit, they're coming here.
They're gonna, right, they're gonna come here for a fill permit at some point, yes.
I understand that, but right now, they're coming here to tell you that they have as of right to bring that fill on to the property.
And they do.
If that's the case.
To this, they do.
I.
In my eyes, they do.
But I'm just telling you, we shut people down in this town because of this.
I understand what we've.
So what you're doing is, you're going to open up a case against this town by allowing this to go on.
What we're going to do is, we're going to have to allow them right now to do this, and we're going to have to put this through subcommittee and rewrite this. That's what we're going to have.
I, I'm not, I'm not doing it unless, well, that's up to you guys, but I'm just telling you, I think what we're doing is you're opening up a big, big lawsuit for this town because we shut other people down.
I think the other, the other properties we shut down, that they have big holes.
There had to be, there had to be.
For a need for the.
There's other, there's other reasons besides they just put some clean dirt on.
But they're stockpiles.
I think that's what the difference is, is that this, in this case, they actually have where that fill is.
Yeah, I understand all that.
Final home for it.
What I'm saying to you is that we've went after people in this town that stored topsoil on their property and sold it, and we shut them down for that reason, because they had.
But again, Leon, you're talking about they sold it, these, these people are not asking to sell it, they're asking to fill a hole.
What you're saying.
Everybody wants fill.
I don't know, maybe I look at it the wrong way, but what I'm, what you're saying is that, okay, because you're selling it, you, we're not going to allow you to put that on your property, but because this guy is going to fill a hole, we're going to allow him to stockpile 400,000 yards. You can't do that, you can't.
Because I'm saying you're creating a stockpile of material and the removal shall not be considered as fill or excavation operation requiring a separate permit. I'm not saying anything, I'm just reading what's in our regulation.
Exemption, full exemption.
Well, it says here, rating of a stockpile of material and removal of the same shall not be considered as fill. Well, you are using it as fill. Not using it.
There is fill, what is? No, it's as fill or excavation operations requiring a separate permit. So it's still fill, but it's not being considered as a fill and excavation operation requiring a separate permit.
Just, but that's kind of.
Well, the problem is, this regulation as written is, is, is horrible.
It's wide open.
Correct.
I think, but I think, but we had other grounds that we stood on, because some other lawyer would have torn this up, and these people got away with it.
And I'm assuming that the person that wants to fill it has a lawyer that's going to tear this one up also.
I think that the reason the other people were taken to court was because of that aspect, that they were turning it into a commercial.
Business.
Of selling, and a business of selling. That's probably how we shut them down, because they did not have a business permit to do that. That would be, and I, this is before my time, I wasn't on this when we were having a lot of those issues, maybe one beginning, but that would be my thought process, is that this is specifically allowing stockpiling.
I don't know how we can't let them.
On that property and not for sale.
We don't either.
Can we get from council a review of the current cases that are in court and is what?
That's what I think we should.
So that we know exactly.
I think, I think that we should look at.
The nature of the case and what our stance was, just so we have some background and so we can tighten up this, this, this is way too open for me, so we can going forward tighten this up to be very, very clear.
Okay.
I believe that's what I needed to do.
Yeah, I agree with you, Leon.
Okay. Bob, do you have any?
I also agree that we need to get the whole filled, so.
I'm there, I don't want to impede progress.
I don't want to impede process either.
I don't want to impede progress on filling the hole either. I want to do it the right way, of course, but I don't see any problem if this is clean fill with getting it on the site and, and starting the process off.
Yeah.
All right. I mean, we're not being asked to make any judgment or pronouncement side, it's just informational, and we can take it from here, like Leon, but like more, a more substantial legal opinion, and I think that's reasonable.
Um, do, do, do we want to?
Can I, can I just finish up on my? I think that what we need to do, in all fairness to the applicant, is delineate exactly what we're looking for, so that they don't keep coming back and keep having to come back and re-deliberate on this time over and over and over. I think as a commission, we need to delineate what our wants and needs are for required fill to move forward on this process, or it'll never get done.
Which is true.
We're getting into a process.
Well, you see, the thing is, is we're not discussing the application right now. And so this is not an application, we're just discussing of bringing in what they, what they said, bringing.
It's a stepping stone.
Which is one thing, but I'm saying this is a stepping stone toward that, I have all that, but the word, we're, they're not in front of us with an application right now, because we need to make sure that we're getting clean fill, for one, like you said, we need documentation that it's clean fill, but what they're, what they're saying is, they could bring in clean fill that they say is clean fill without giving us any documentation, because they're going to stockpile it on that property. So how, what are we going to get from that?
Considering what they actually need.
Well, they're still going to have to give us, what are they going to have to get?
Let me ask Rick.
That it's clean fill?
How will we determine as they stockpile this material that it is indeed clean?
Oh, no, there will be a procedure, a process.
What's the process, because there's no application in front of us?
No.
There's no requirement, is what you're trying to tell me with this, with this.
The, the property owner is of the opinion that they can stockpile as of right.
I understand that.
So.
That means.
From this day forward, they can proceed, and then I'll, my department will have to react based on this regulation, okay?
Well, what do you mean, proceed?
No, the applicant's position is, they can stockpile material as of right the way they interpret the regulation. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to advise the commission of what they would like to do. They have access of clean material that they would like to start stockpiling.
So they don't need our approval to do this, they're just letting us know they're.
I was just going to ask, is there any obligation on?
Staff is bringing it to you, I mean, this property has some significant issues going on.
But there is no obligation on their behalf to bring those stuffs.
Starting tomorrow, they could start bringing in material. Our department will have to work with them to make sure that the material is clean. That's on our shoulders.
I mean, I think before, I understand how the regulations are currently, and they have the right to do that, but I think that there should be something they provide to us first to confirm it as clean fill and not just.
Yeah, staff, staff will work with them on that component, we have to.
Well, they have to give us something saying that it's clean before they start throwing stuff on there.
That's why.
That's right, I think we're in agreement on that, and Rick does have a mechanism for that, I believe.
We've learned a lot over the last couple of years.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, did you want to hear from Mr. Soli, the source of the material, or do you not want to go into that tonight?
No.
Do you know the source of the material? I don't want to open this up to the public.
No, I'm not doing that.
Can he do it in five minutes?
I can.
Rick knows the source of your material, why don't you let us?
Well, if he can do it in five minutes, I'd like to hear from him.
Is everyone else on the call right now, or else add their five minutes?
No, 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 Kevin's getting five minutes and nobody else.
Okay.
That's my opinion, I'm not the chairman.
Do we have a consensus on that?
I'm good.
Just Kevin.
I think we're allowed to, it'd be considered correspondence, we're asking a question and it's not, and we're getting a three-word answer.
All right, Mr. Soli, you have five minutes. Timer is set.
Oh, thanks, thanks, members of the commission, for the record, my name's Kevin Soli, licensed professional engineer. I'm not even going to take five minutes, I, I can just offer some, some clarification. As, as the commission's discussed, we believe the regulations give us the ability to, to stockpile material. What we wanted to do as part of this is to be open and communicate with the commission as we have since the current owner has acquired the property, that's been our intent from the beginning. As, as the commission knows, we need a lot of fill to fill this hole, and right now there's material available that's demonstrated and been tested and certified clean. I'm looking at a letter from Licensed Environmental Professional, the town of Wilton generated 3,000 yards of clean fill that needs to be placed somewhere, we have the ability to source that and stockpile it. Sacred Heart University is looking to, to export clean fill, Fairfield University is looking to export clean fill. So what, what I was hoping, and I think the commission and, and staff would do is, we would be stockpiling material, but we would be providing records of all documentation, all testing, everything to show that the material is clean, it meets the definition of clean fill, it has testing analytics associated with all of it, and that would all be provided as part of, you know, any documentation that, that staff or the commission wants, it would all be.
Hey, Kev, would they, would they provide that before they dump it or after?
Absolutely, no, we would do it before, because everything, because everything would be done in accordance with the material acceptance protocol, which has been developed for this site. It's been sent to DEEP, being reviewed with DEEP, and it would all have to follow that same protocol. So, so it would all be provided to, to staff before any material is brought to the site, and it would just be stockpiled and, and, you know, surrounded with silt fence and, and protected the correct way, and, and that's how it would be, it would be administered. And it would be, you know, we talked about this with Wetlands, they were on board with it. We're obviously looking to hopefully finish our remediation application with them at their next meeting on June 9th, and then we'll be before you with a formal fill permit application, but for now, we just want to take advantage of the fact that the material exists, and we want to get as much of it as we can so we can fill this hole as fast as possible, and hopefully put this entire issue behind us so the town can move on from, you know, all the prior transgressions by, by other.
I'm all right with that.
I agree, Kevin, a question for you, and you may have, I apologize, so the clean, the fill, the fill from Wilton and Sacred Heart, has that already been deemed clean by DEEP?
By LEPs and has analytical data and sampling information and protocols, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're going to give us all that before they.
I know, I just want to know who's certifying it as clean.
Billy, Billy from the corner.
The people that are providing the materials certify it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Pretty much that they sign and say, this material is clean. According to DEEP.
Thanks, Kev.
Thank you, thank you for the, for the five minutes, I appreciate it.
Okay, and thank you.
Get it in three, let's remember that for next time.
All right, so then, as this is informational, we are not required to make any announcements or proclamations here tonight or approve or disapprove of this.
Great, so I know what I have to do with special counsel. There is history to this regulation, I don't know the history, but as Leon indicated, enforcement was done in the past, so all these issues.
Well, those are different cases, and I mean, I believe, like he said, some of it was for selling, some was processed, et cetera, none of, that is not what appears as.
It's good to get a handle on the different variations.
Maybe next subcommittee meeting, we can look clean that up, we can.
This regulation is.
Well, maybe next subcommittee meeting, we could revisit it, or visit it.
Yeah, visit the exception case.
So, so Rick, on this bottom part of B here, right, however, the stockpiling of material is prohibited without a permit approval by the commission, what does that mean?
That goes back to the filling and grading. When you've determined that a project is filling and grading, it needs a permit, this regulation, for whatever reason it was put in, allows temporary stockpiling to be removed. It doesn't say, and remove from the site to another site, it just says removed, it wasn't well-written. I, I just hope that certain letter, words were not omitted when it was recodified. You know, I, I, I didn't go to that depth.
Okay, we have to visit it, I mean.
That's why we're, we're reexamining most of all the regulations, as you know.
Right.
From lighting to landscaping.
Right, right, right.
And filling and grading is an important component, just like signage was. That's a chairman went through for years of public error.
No, I think, I think you guys are, you know, I mean, there's nothing we can do right now, right?
No, we're going to investigate it.
We just got to, we got to visit it in subcommittee and bring it, bring something.
As you know, due to the sensitivity of the, of the property, I, staff has to communicate, and I will communicate.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
So going on to commission reports, I have no report. Do any of the commissioners have any?
The House passed the zoning, I believe, I don't know if that means it moves on to Senate.
I think so, I read the same thing.
Yeah, so there are.
HB 6107.
There may be requirements in that bill for certification, not certification, but for education for the commissioners. So I know, I know most of us have taken courses or in the past, but this may require that we do take a course, certain number of CME hours per year, et cetera, that hasn't been determined.
I have nothing.
Do you have any other information?
I can read stuff.
Okay.
I'll send it to you later.
Good job.
Any other commissioner reports? Land use staff reports?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, my town planner's report dated June 30th. For zoning, Board of Appeals, the next meeting is May 6th. They've had meetings in both May and June, one item, agendas, and their meetings have been remote. Nothing new with the Siding Council, Regulation Subcommittee, Chairman indicated that May 15th. Talked about a variety of, of standards, including landscaping, the reintroduction of interior lots, I forwarded that to the Police and Fire for their comments. Some things that you want to think about for interior lots, the length of the driveway. you want to think about for interior lots, the length of the driveway. Some towns hold it at no longer than 1,000 feet. And that's why I want to hear back from the police and fire. Uh, cause you can get some very long interior lots and, uh, uh, public safety is important. Uh, zoning enforcement program. Uh, once again, staff is continuing to monitor and regulate 125 Garter Road and 45 Pepper Street. Uh, an application is going to come in for Garter for a subdivision and that will entail the removal of the equipment. We have new ownership and we got to get that lot cleaned up. Uh, we had a violation of 43 Sleepy Hollow Drive. Brushing debris was put on town property that has since been resolved by the zoning enforcement officer. Uh, anti blight. We are meeting with the owner of 337 Monroe Turnpike. That's an old single family home that is, uh, literally falling apart before very eyes. We're working on a strategy. He is getting his environmental assessment done. He's also going to have the vegetation removed and the, uh, buried fuel tank removed. Uh, there's a lot going on. We do have a, a blight regulation and so far he is cooperating. Uh, the 1586 Monroe Turnpike, the old Stevenson, uh, post office. He repainted the building. He fixed the roof. Uh, he's adding some more, uh, improvements. Eventually that building's going to be knocked down, uh, for redevelopment. But in the meantime, he has done some improvements. So we're very appreciative, uh, of that. Uh, outdoor dining, dining minor site plan. Uh, Monroe Soso is the only one that has been approved. That's temporary. It's going to be seasonal. We have seasonal and we have permanent. Vazys is still a work in progress. I will be showing to you at the next meeting his application. It's quite involved. Beautiful details, masonry, a chimney, uh, an awning, very tastefully done. You'll be very pleased with that. Asteria Romana, same thing. That's a work in progress. Uh, planning matters. Uh, we all have the 2021, uh, P O C D above, uh, before you, so please take that home. Uh, meeting schedule, our next meeting was scheduled for June 17th, as I reported earlier. Uh, I, I'll, I'll be out of state for a family member, uh, matter. So, uh, we need, uh, the, the chairman to officially cancel the, uh, June 17th meeting. Our next meeting will be, uh, July 1st and then the 15th and then August 5th. And it was also suggested tonight that we cancel the August 19th meeting because of some commissioners, uh, scheduling. So our next meeting, uh, will be July 1st. Second meeting in July is the 15th, then August 5th and we will cancel the August 19th. Does that work well with everyone?
Well, how was the application load? I mean, are we?
Right now it's, uh, it's not bad. We're moving along. The big one was the overlay zone in 25.
What date in August? 19th you want to cancel?
Yes, that's the second scheduled meeting.
So July 1st, 15th, August 5th, canceled 19th?
Yeah. And July, and June 17th. Now I also have, uh, I need to report on 10 Victoria Drive, the Amazon. The applicant is requesting to hold off on the larger building. There's the gatehouse that will have restroom facilities in it. Remember we have 400 cars coming. They do drink coffee on the way to work. We need restrooms. They are going to provide restrooms in the guardhouse. What they want to do is to hold off on the larger building, which is the locker room, office and more restrooms into 2023. What they are looking to do is to start work shortly, the site work, do the guardhouse, do the sidewalk that's going along Victoria Drive up to Route 25, install the septic system because you need to install the septic while you're doing the regrading.
I mean, if they're going to do all this work, why won't they build a building?
They want to hold off because they don't know what size they want to do it. So I'm reporting to you, this is what they like to do. They will post a hundred percent bond on that building. And what they would ask for is a provisional CO this fall for the 400 vehicles that will be stored on the site.
In my opinion, that's a, that's a, that's, that's, that's a recipe for I'm not building it.
I kind of agree.
I tend to agree. We approved it.
Yeah.
The way it stands. That's a 100% recipe of. Went out of our way. Other stuff in these frills. Commission went out of their way to, to, to take care of that. They're not going to build that building.
All right. So what I, what I'm hearing from you is this is a consensus.
Well, do they need the building?
Do they what?
What, why do they need this large building? Is they're going to come in, they're going.
Locker room, more restaurants.
They're going to pay the area. They're going to put a guard gate. They're going to put restrooms in. They're going to start using it to bring the trucks in.
Yeah.
Start getting the revenue. Why do we need a large building there? Why do we want to tell them, no, you can't do this unless you put this big building? That's what we have.
Cause that's what we approve.
I know, but that's, that's kind of like, you know, um.
Peter switch. I don't know.
Doesn't make sense to me.
It doesn't make sense to me that they came before us and they, they wanted a building and now all of a sudden they don't want it.
Put off when the buildings are a little expensive right now.
They're going to build the building, but.
No, they are.
They like to get.
That's what it is.
Then they need to come in and talk to it.
I think it's the cost of building right now too. That could be prohibiting them.
I think that's probably possible.
It's never going to be built.
They're never going to build it.
Issues.
Never going to build that.
There's a hundred percent bond, so they don't.
Do you want a modification or will the bond satisfy? It's commission's call. A bond to cover a hundred percent of the cost, which we will maintain, or do you want a modification and hear the whole story?
I don't really think it matters to tell you the truth. They don't build it up for a year or two. They're going to start using the parking lot. We're going to get the revenue from the vehicles put in there. There's going to be plenty of facilities for them to, you know, relieve them.
So when do we call the bond?
They said, when did they say they want to start building?
They are saying they will go for the full CO. The initial provisional CO will be late fall to start using it for.
I got that.
They want to use it for this.
Thing of 2023 is their schedule.
So that's.
We pulled a bond.
It was two years.
Two years.
Yeah, we'll start constructing in the fall of 2022 for a full CO, spring of 2023.
They're not building it. But why do we care?
Why do you come in front of us then?
They thought they wanted a large building with lockers, really nice and fancy so the drivers could come and sit down, have a cup of coffee, whatever. And now they've decided, well, we're going to put that on hold. Let's just get it up and running for this holiday I don't think that we should say, no, you, you can't do anything unless you do the whole thing. And we want to see it done now.
We took the project in its entirety into consideration when we deliberated on it and voted.
Right.
And now we're, we're talking about a different, uh, a different set of circumstances.
Rick, why didn't they come in front of this commission?
Why did they not?
Yeah.
No, this, this happened real recent.
I understand that, but why didn't they come?
Which was real recent.
Commission to explain.
Last week.
But why didn't they come in front of us to explain why they want to hold?
They go, Rick, please report this to this commission and see if the hundred percent completion bond will satisfy the commission as opposed to a modification.
Yeah, I want to just.
It's either modification, you come back before the full commission, or you can deal with it at the staff level with posting a bond that covers a hundred percent of the.
I mean, but if the hundred percent bond does nothing for the town? Can we call that bond?
It requires them to actually.
Yeah, if it's not.
Well, we've never called a bond in this town anyway.
The, the schedule that they're showing is construction fall of 2022. CO to be.
What's the, what's the full bond?
2023.
What's the full bond?
Well, I, that's, it's so new. I, I didn't get the information yet.
Well then.
The building a hundred, a hundred thousand, 200,000, I don't know. The project engineers putting that, those numbers together.
Cause in my eyes, if they're going to write it. Don't you think that they should have came in front of us to explain to us what they're trying to do?
They asked me to ask you first. If it's got to come before you, they'll come before you.
I think just like the couple of other commission members have questions. I mean, they should be in front of us. All I'm saying is if they write a check for a hundred thousand dollars and then they decide, yeah, I don't know. Just saying. Three, four hundred thousand dollars.
But yet they're still.
Maximize the property or the trucks the whole time and not build the building, then it's, ah, doesn't make much sense to me.
Yeah.
I personally myself, they would never build the building. Cause I'd say, hey, I'll give you a hundred thousand dollars and I wash my hands of this $400,000 building and then I just get my cars to park out there and, and it'll look like a junkyard.
I agree.
We got 10,000 trucks out there. It's going to look like a junkyard.
It could be a number of things, but they.
A nice one because they'll all be new trucks.
Right.
It's going to turn into a commercial parking lot.
They're going to be, they're going to be lined, it's going to be a lined up junkyard.
It's not only approved.
Yeah, it's going to turn into a commercial parking lot, which.
A company like Amazon can write a check for a hundred thousand dollars or whatever it is and say.
They're leasing it, you know, Amazon's leasing it.
On the owner. Whatever.
Yeah.
And they could say, hey, let's see how things turn out on this property in a couple of years. And if we don't want to do this.
Eh, it's noncommittal.
Eh, we lost a couple bucks.
Eh.
But also does it. Wait a minute, that's not true because the property owner is developing the property and then once it's all set, he's leasing it to Amazon. Amazon is, you know, they could, they could say, oh, I don't like it. I'm going somewhere else, you know? That's his business with his contract with Amazon. So there is a property owner that we're dealing with, not Amazon. That's why they weren't even named. So some, the person who owns this property wants to develop it to a parking lot and then lease it to Amazon. I don't know why they originally said they want a huge, um, building, but they finally never.
They don't really need that. They're not.
To get started.
Just give them an hour, a day and two years, say, you know what? We got this huge parking lot. We proved it. We're going to go to Trumbull again. Now we're stuck with this huge parking lot.
The owner could always guard house if Amazon fails.
Get started and do what.
That's my.
Business and his, you know, his attorneys can have a, a contract that has teeth in it to keep Amazon, to keep the client in there. But it's not, we're not dealing with Amazon. We're dealing with the, um, property owner who for some reason feels like he'd rather just get it moving.
Well, he feels that because he probably caught like a word from, from his client that that's what they're looking for.
Yeah. They just want the spaces.
I, I have another, uh, uh, need for clarification. We're not meeting now until July 1st, as you know. Uh, does, it sounds like the commission wants to get a better handle on this. They want to start site work.
We approved site work, didn't we?
They can go with the site work. They can do the site work.
Site work is based on the approved plans.
Yeah. Okay.
Normally you got to pay for the building permits.
Right.
Both buildings. They want to hold off on the big, the bigger building, just pay for the, the guardhouse.
Why?
Cause they're not going to.
That's what they. They're not going to build a bigger building?
Yeah, that's part of the modified version.
I got all that.
Does the commission have any issue with site work?
No issue. I don't have an issue with site work. If they're going to do, if they're going to do the site work as accordance to the plan.
Site work cleans up the areas that were destroyed, that shouldn't have. Site work includes sidewalks of Victoria and Route 25.
I'm okay with they do site work accordance with their plans.
With the septic systems, right?
Correct. Cause that'll be, that would be the same septic system they're using if they're going to build a big building, correct?
Yes.
So then.
Like, like, like Nicole just brought up, we, we basically denied the Stevenson lumber property based on the fact that we saw it as going to be nothing but a parking lot, add a gateway property to our town. And that's what.
With the gatehouse.
I thought we.
No, we, we.
No, we took out the commercial.
We took out parking, but we still approved the. We didn't want to park a lot.
That's what you're going to get now.
Right. That's the issue with that.
That's what I said.
Not, cause this is for fleet parking. This is not for individual rented out spaces.
Parking.
No. One's a fleet, one is parking old trucks and your RVs and your, you know, whatever.
It's boring at the end of the day. One's a commercial truck.
I disagree.
Aren't going to know those nitty gritty details. They're just going to see a.
Going to see a bunch of vehicles parked.
And you're going to, the initial work too, you'll get the supplemental screening. Remember the commission? But they'll do that.
I think they should.
That will help out the residential area. But I, I need, I need help on this commissioner.
And the gas stations are going to see an increase of customers. Uh, restaurants are going to see an increase of customers. That's not what you're going to get if you let, if commercial parking is where residents are parking their cars that used to be parked illegally in their driveway. That doesn't boost the economy like a fleet parking does.
That'll point.
That's the difference. We approved the fleet parking. It brings in people. It brings in workers to the town. It's going to boost the economy.
Are they asking for any changes to the amount of parking spaces, Rick?
No.
Okay.
So two issues before you tonight. Do you feel comfortable with staff working with them to get the, uh, permit for site work? And then the second part is they want to hold off on the main building until, uh, 2022.
They're willing to give us a bond.
Oh yeah. A hundred percent completion bond.
I would, I would want to require the bond. That would be my.
Yeah, that was what they're offering.
And do you want them back before the commission on the.
We don't know what the bond is.
At first.
Know what the bond is. We don't know, we don't know what the bond is.
Yeah.
Oh, you can come back and let us know what the bond is.
Yeah. And all the.
Amount.
You, you want to hear from the team? What is going on?
Yes.
The real reason why you're doing it and.
I'm not, I don't know. Am I allowed to? Cause I'm not seated, but I would like to have them come back before us.
Not deliberating.
I know. I'm just, you know.
We're arguing.
Stop being nice. All right.
Being nice.
Problem. Let's close it up. I think, uh, I think they should come before us one more time. Find out the real reason why this is going down.
But they're ready for this. They're ready to put the shovel in the ground.
I got all that. Tell them to start digging.
Yeah, okay.
Because that site work is not going to be done in a couple of days.
Everyone, that's just based on the current plans.
Rick, on, on top of it all. But that site work, how long is it going to take?
A couple of months.
Couple of months. Right. So if they can come before us July 1st, which is three weeks away, they've still really done nothing there, you know? You really should have been here tonight, Rick.
Yeah.
Well, he just. Should have. I, I mean, really seriously.
There wasn't enough time, right?
He just found out about it.
I, I didn't get to bother them out yet.
No, because he's. You'll have all that by July 1st.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So if they can come in front of us July 1st. We could add it. They can start the, the site work. I mean, that, that site work has to be done anyway. Awesome.
They may not even want.
And they would like a conditional CO.
Yeah.
I know. That's what I'm saying. So there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of steps here we got to do. I know, but they're going to come before.
And you're right. There's a bunch of.